Good evening and welcome to the July 11th, 2024 Meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Baratsky? De Placido?
Here.
Laney Martin?
Here.
Brown? Weingrad?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Depone?
Here.
Young Gertz?
Here.
Spiegelman?
Here.
Bowe?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Vice President Veighy?
Here.
President Hecker?
Here. Thank you. Now, please note the Commissioners Rothman and Brown are excused this evening. Uh, may we all rise for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag. Uh, thank you. Just two brief announcements before we move on to the agenda. I regret that I'm not able to be physically present this evening. I have to be offsite attending to a family matter. And secondly, I wanted to acknowledge, um, the passing on June 25th of De McGrath, who was the former Ward 14 Commissioner. Uh, she passed away at the age of 86. Then we send our condolences to her family. And with that, uh, I will open it up for public comment on agenda items that are being voted on this evening. And we can start with the room.
Yes, hello, good evening. Can I move this? It's not usually. All right. I'm going to talk about the minutes. First of all, in June, at the meeting of the board, there were 15 questions asked by citizens. No answers were given to the citizens for any of the 15 questions. In May, there were 11 questions asked by citizens. No answers were given by, to any of these citizens. The minutes are constantly wrong and corrections are never made. Instead Commissioners approve the minutes with incorrect summaries and incomplete information. This demonstrates deception. The minutes do not match up with the video recordings. The June minutes state that I submitted two petitions. First of all, both of them should be described in the minutes. One of them is not. The video is edited, but it is still clearly, it still clearly shows that the petitions were refused by Mr. Hecker and Rudolph and Clark's Ms. Gallagher. Last month, these petitions, um, that I want to talk about them for a minute. I asked for a year's delay Roslin Library Improvement. It's been years delayed and promised for a long time. And I requested to preserve the Liston Marion property as green space. Both were rejected by Ms. Hecker, by Ms. Gallagher and Mr. Hecker. A quiet sudden declaration was made by Ms. Gallagher that Abington Township will no longer accept citizens' petitions. Ms. Gallagher turned her mic down to make that a statement to me. No explanation was given for denying citizens the right to petition. No Commissioners asked for a vote to be taken on the loss of the right to petition. Then Mr. Hecker commanded me to sit. He also threatened to have me removed from the room. This is a constant issue. Mr. Hecker regularly refuses to have people, regularly says he's going to have people removed from the room. Now, I only presented petitions for green space and a much long, denied library improvement that was promised. Um, a citizen who lives on Ferndale came with me last time to support the preserving of the Liston Marion property as green space. After listening to the way I was spoken to, she decided not to address the board. Why Commissioners, do you want to bully citizens that ask for basic maintenance and resources? The township has 19 million in COVID funding, funding. None of the money has go, is going to basic maintenance or even resources, the most basic of them. Refusing petitions communicates that no members of the leadership have any interest in citizen rights and concerns. The leadership agenda is fixed. Millionaires and billionaire Democrats want Abington citizens to accept a very low standard of living with no democracy. Poorly considered apartments with extravagant rents will make citizens lifetime renters.
Ms. Cubell, please conclude.
High rents keep people poor. Home ownership promotes financial stability for all. Commissioners, you are against allowing citizens to speak out against the unsafe overdevelopment and urban decay that Mr. Manfredi has made his legacy. Commissioners, your job is to reject-
Ms. Cubell, can you please wrap up your comments? Your time has expired.
All right, I will go and show another time. I will bring them back then. Are you accepting petitions or is this the ongoing thing? You're not going to accept citizen petitions?
Your time has expired.
Hi, I'm Karen Milovich. I live at 529 Berkeley. I'm a longtime resident. And something on the agenda tonight is massage therapy. And just a reminder, they are licensed providers. Well, a block and a half from me at 718 Huntington Pike, we have the Flamingo Spa that's open seven days a week. That has, it's essentially a house of ill repute. Look at the Google reviews. People just unabashedly explain the services they got there. So these are not licensed providers. I don't know why they are still in business. It, this has been a problem in Abington and I'm not sure why they're not, as a, as a nurse practitioner, we're fingerprinted and we have FBI, um, clearances and state police clearances. So I'm not sure, A, why unlicensed providers are able to continue to do services, if you really want to call it that, and why these kind of things are still operating in Abington. Both the local Commissioner and the police know about this. They've been in business for about a year. It's also a site for human trafficking. I, I think, I'm hoping that as the council people, you will do something to stop this and shut this down. I recall that Abington was in the news for having an unlicensed provider rape 12 people recently. So to avoid this kind of stuff, I would hope that, um, we do close these kind of businesses down. And then a reminder that this is a, a family neighborhood where children live within a block or two. There's a church a block away, a dog grooming parlor, a school. So this is not a place where we set up these kinds of businesses. And if you're going to be, if you're going to masquerade as a licensed provider, you should be a licensed provider in Abington and the state of Pennsylvania. So please do something about 718 Huntington Pike, the Flamingo Spa. Look at the reviews. It doesn't take long to figure out what they're doing there. It's got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Rooney, I live in Ardsley. First, I'd like to start off and say, Abington knows how to do 4th of July correctly. I hope everybody went to the parade and to the fireworks. And if you didn't, you really missed a great show. And I'd just like to say, Greater Glenside Patriotic Association, thank you so much for the unbelievable work you do for a whole year. I think they raised $70,000. I could be wrong. Just remember that number for a second. Next, our police department. They were there from early in the morning, getting everything ready till 9:30 at night. I was, my wife was with Lieutenant Fink standing outside of the Copper Beach. He was on the bicycle and I have to say, the old guy, old guy in a police force was on the manual bike and the young guys were on the electric bike. So he was still going strong at nine at night. Public Works did a great job. Cheltenham Police did a great job. And then Mr. Manfredi, Mr. Jones, Friday, I live in Ardsley and we get our pickups on Thursday. So they did double duty on a brutally hot day and got all our trash and recyclables picked up. And it's worth noting, these people work hard on days off and then they come around and work doubly hard the next day. So I want to thank them for that. Where this all leads into is, I'm sure, I hope everybody knows, if you're a citizen watching or anything, because one of the items is a 34, almost $35,000 fine Abington Township is paying to Environmental Protection Agency, I'm not sure which agency right there, because they failed to do their paperwork. So just imagine, Greater Glenside Patriotic Association works all year to raise 70 grand. And then we get a fine that was evidently in excess of $35,000. And then we just fritter away, there's 22,000 tax accounts in Abington, so a dollar to $2 for each person in Abington is frittered away because we didn't do our administrative paperwork. So we could have paid a half at least of the Greater Glenside Patriotic Association's whole fee for that lack of administrative paperwork. And I love the way that it's written up. They say, oh, but we did a great job because the fine was a lot more, but we were able to negotiate it down from the administrative expertise of the township and our outstanding supervisor, I mean, our solicitor. But I'm wondering, how much did the solicitor charge for that negotiations? Because as you all know, they get paid coming, we're going. Okay? I've heard Mr. Veighy and other people talk about, oh, there was $20,000 fine here, whatever. I wait to see the discussion on this 35 and whatever the thing was. So everybody got our green tax bills today. Please pay them early, you get a 2% discount. But remember, 35 grand and it could have been more was wasted because they just didn't do their administrative paperwork. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? If not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Now, I just have a quick question. Did you say you are no longer accepting petitions from the people? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Joe O'Brien, I live in Glen Side. Okay. Are you no longer accepting petitions from the public? Is that correct or not?
That's not correct. Um, and we're actually in receipt of the petitions that Ms. Cubell provided. Um, we, I didn't want them brought up to the dais that night. I asked her to leave them behind and we are in possession of both of those petitions. So-
Okay, I just keep hearing different information. So you still are accepting petitions from the general public?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, if there's no one else in the room, we can move to Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
That's unbelievable, Mr. Hecker. You just were asked a minute ago by the woman who handed you the petitions last month, are you accepting petitions now? And you told her to go sit down, that you wouldn't answer. You refused to answer that. This is unbelievable treatment of the public. And last time you did say you weren't accepting petitions. You may have said something else behind the scenes or to somebody else, or you may have taken petitions later on, but you clearly refused them in public, which is on the videotape. And you made absolutely no explanation that there was some other way to deliver them. This kind of behavior is just unbelievable. That would be unconstitutional not to accept the petitions. And the way you just treated that particular person right now was also ridiculous. And then for you to sit there and go, yeah, yeah, we're accepting petitions, of course we are. Unbelievable, just unbelievable. The massage parlors were just brought up. The police took two years last time allowing a massage parlor that everybody knew to be a human trafficking event and did not close it down until we began to get the public coming to meetings and demanding an explanation. So there's something totally wrong going on with the massage parlors. That needs to be straightened out. The waivers for the school on the permit fees and the code inspection things are absolutely also unconscionable. Uh, I have not seen in any particular place that you have ceased and desisted giving waivers to the school district, which had, I, I was told that 30 hours would go into the school district. That has nine schools, garages, maintenance, buildings, and all kinds of work. That's an absurd figure. And this needs to be actually investigated. I do not believe the school and the township have the right to mingle funds and to hide funds and to not have line items for those particular funds. And that was done on purpose in, in a meeting with Klein and Amy Sicker. So we need to change the operations of things in this township. In, in addition, we have, um, items, uh, coming up tonight. Well, okay, that's on the working session, so I'll, I'll let that one go for right now. But we have things that in this township that are not working simply because you will not answer questions and not give a reasonable explanation for things. And there is no reason for you to treat the residents in this manner. You need to change that. Commissioner Laney Martin wanted to bring people forward and celebrate them and celebrate their accomplishments. Well, we did, used to do that. That was when you had four days of meetings. You had, uh, you had a committee meeting Tuesday and Thursdays. So those were two days of just committee meetings. Then you also had the finance and other meetings on other days. And then you came to the Board of Commissioners-
Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Can you please wrap up your comments?
I'll finish that at the end of the, of this session, but that, that needs to be understood by Commissioner Martin. Thank you.
Mike Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, Tobin Kirkwood-Aveneau, um, just real quick on the, on the massage parlor, the Flamingo Spa, I just Googled it. Um, and the description is the Flamingo Spa, Hollywood, PA, Huntington Pike, nationality Chinese, age estimate 35. Physical description, five foot two, long black hair, 100 pounds, C cup, fit. So as far as that goes, I'll let everybody draw their own conclusion. But regarding the petitions and, and stuff like that, can somebody, like, how does the, the average citizen get something in front of the board to go through all the process to be voted on and, and passed as a rule or a law or whatever? What is the correct process? Is it only, um, through petition or is there another way? Could somebody answer that?
Mr. Tobin, you can work with your, your Ward Commissioner if there's a particular concern or issue that you would like to have brought forward.
Okay, so is that a, does that, do we like have to get a petition to, like Drew is, is our Commissioner? Would that be involve me getting a petition or is that something, like what is, what, there's got to be a process, I'm assuming, right?
Well, not knowing what specific issue you're trying to bring forward, I mean, I would recommend and encourage you to talk with him.
Well, the specific issue would be, um, the speaking rights at these meetings. I would love to see us have a, be able to have a question and answer period. And where we can have a dialogue with the Commissioners and try and get answers. For example, like one of the things, we had a question and answer on the comprehensive plan a year ago. And then it kind of died on the vine. We've heard nothing on the comprehensive plan. So it would just be nice to be able to just bring this stuff up in a meeting and get answers on it, where we're at and things like that. The EDC, it would be nice to get a status update on that and be able to go back and forth and talk about what's important about it and what's not and when's it all going to get kicked off. They're the kind of things that I would like to be able to formally discuss in a Commissioners meeting. So is that something, so if I bring that up to Drew, Drew can take that forward?
I think we can find ways to answer whatever questions you have. And if you want to get on the, on the ED corp, I mean, we're happy to provide it for you. They had their most, they had their, their organizational meeting, uh, earlier this summer, elected a chair and a vice chair, and that's about the extent of the activity to date.
Okay, and well, but might like further a follow-up question, that'd be, what is taking so long? Basically, this will be going on for, well, last year, it was of the utmost importance that we get an EDC. This was in August. So we're almost coming up on its, another birthday of it.
Well, we're up and running now. And I think that's the important thing.
Okay, but what are they, what are they, the, the important thing to me would be if the public knew what they were actually working on. That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. That's what I'd like to be able to ask questions at a meeting like this and say, update us on what are their activities? What are the, what plans are they working on, things like that?
You're also able, I mean, you can talk to them directly at their public meetings because there's, there is opportunity for public comment there as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, with that, we will now move to the consent agenda. And for that, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Beigh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of the consent agenda, listed as items A through C. An ISO move.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will turn to new business and I will once again turn this back to Board Vice President Matt Beigh.
We have one item of new business, BOC 03071124, motion to authorize advertisement of an ordinance emitting a TO fees, an ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments from members who are in the room? And if so, please just speak up.
No, they're not.
All right, none on Zoom? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
That concludes the new business, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President Beigh, we'll now turn to matters of the Finance Committee. And for that, I will turn to Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. First item up, FC 01071124, motion to adopt Resolution 24-027, fire inspection and permit fee schedule, and ISO move.
It's been seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, are there any comments or questions for members in the room?
There are none.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item, uh, item FC 02071124, motion to adopt Resolution 24-028, establishing a fee schedule for licenses for alternative and massage therapy. An ISO move.
Second.
It's been seconded. Comments or questions for members of the board?
There are none.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, FC 03071124, motion to authorize $299,206.30 to be expensed from refuse fund balance for the purchase of a triaxle container lift truck. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments or questions for members of the board?
None in the room.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item, FC 04071124, motion to authorize $34,100 to be expensed from refuse fund balance for the payment of a Department of Environmental Protection civil penalty. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board?
None in the room.
Hearing none, all those in-
Wait, 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 sorry. Ayanna.
Commissioner Laney Martin.
Yes, um, so, Mr. Manfredi, things been put into place so that something like this won't happen again with administrative aspect?
Yes. It's important to note that the individual, um, let me say it this way, yes, there has been a, a lot of work done to remediate the errors that were caused with this. Mr. Jones, um, who manages and directs the refuse division of the Public Works Department, and I have addressed this very plainly, um, he has went, been in front of the Finance Committee and was very transparent in the events that, uh, drove this matter. And we are confident that all the measures that are being in place to remediate it will, will do as much as it can, um, to prevent any human error.
I, I would just like to say that in my six months of being Commissioner and doing my rotation and orientation, onboarding and meeting all the professional workers within the administration, I know everyone strive to do the best and we all make mistakes. And sometimes, you know, mistakes sometimes come with big dollar figures. So I appreciate that we were able to bring it down as much as we can, this mistake, and that we have put things in place that this won't happen again and that we do absolutely take, um, seriously the obligation of maintaining, you know, the fiscal dollars that we, that we get from market constituents. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. And I'd like to, if I may, commend, uh, some people for when this became known to us, for stepping up and being honest in what had happened so that we can actually correct it the right way. The Public Works Department and the refuse division do a tremendous job every day. And it's important also to note that there was no environmental harm done, that this was purely administrative and there was no environmental harm. Um, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Commissioner, if I, if I could, very briefly, Mr. Manfredi's a little nicer than I am. This was related to a former employee not filing timely reports and in some instances not filing, uh, reports at all. Uh, it was discovered by DEP, it was brought to our attention. There was originally a discussion regarding about a $44,000, $45,000 fine. Uh, we showed them in very short order, the procedures that we were going to put in place to make sure that there was a fail safe so that this would not happen again, that if a one individual employee failed to file reports or failed to timely file them, there would be some sort of backup or some sort of notification. Uh, DEP was very happy that we had voluntarily, uh, established these protocols and they agreed to reduce the fine by about 10, 10, $11,000. But I also think it's very important to note, this was, although it's the Department of Environmental Protection, there was never any environmental violations here. This was strictly a paperwork and permit, uh, issue that we're being fined for.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
And last item, FC 05071124, motion to approve the May 2024 expenditures in the amount of $5,816,640.13 and salaries and wages in the amount of $3,433,831.42 and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of August 2024. An ISO move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Baratsky?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
Laney Martin?
Yes.
Brown? Weingrad?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Depone?
Yes.
Young Gertz?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Bowe?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Vice President Veighy?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that would conclude the Finance Committee agenda items for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. That concludes our formal agenda. We will now open it up for public comment on general matters of township business.
Hello, this is Adele Cubell. Before I begin, I had extra names to put on that petition and I did not hand it in because I'm fearful of handing it in. But this is for the long-promised, years-delayed, overdue Roslin Library. I have over 300 names at this point. Who will take this petition?
Do you want to leave it on the table there? Leave it on the table right there.
I'm sorry?
Leave it on the table right there.
That sounds better than leaving it out on the trash. Now, I hope you didn't use that against me. I, no, please take that back. I did not get to hand in a petition and I had to ask questions and you're on 2:25. I'm sorry, but I haven't spoken.
Reset the clock to three minutes.
After three and a half years of working to correct Old York Road blight, I can accurately state the Commissioners are not concerned with providing a state a safe environment. Rudolph Clark refuses to hold the worst corporations and speculators accountable for blight. Mr. Manfredi begrudges citizens' maintenance and resources. Examples, Rainmore and Flanagan made one court appearance. Ra, Rudolph and Clark requested that the corporation pay no fines for over half a decade of blighting Abington. The corporation saved thousands by never cleaning. The weeded area by Trader Joe's contains hundreds of pounds of cement fragments, wood and metal. The- and metal. The parking lot needs complete repaving. The curbing and metal barrier by the deep incline needs replacing. Judge Price stated that Raymour &amp; Flanagan should use money saved by paying no fines to remediate the property. The township settled for a minor cleanup and a few trash cans. The Liston Marion property is for sale. This high-density area has dangerous congestion. This property needs to be preserved as green space. Abington has nineteen million in COVID relief money. There is no room for more apartments here. Do not root a favored developer to this property and then rezone for apartments. Old York Road continues to be trashed by commercial businesses, apartment owners, and even the township. Many, including the township, grow five-to-six-foot weeds. This is happening because the township is intentionally dysfunctional. Mr. Manfredi caters to developers with taxpayer money while Abington's streets are filled with potholes and collecting trash. The Old York Islands were maintained by a service now a short-staffed street department is supposed to keep up. Abington Hospital is famous for township clout. The hospital owns trashed garages and poorly maintained and neglected parking lots. Homes that surround the hospital are neglected. Abington Hospital is undermining the neighborhood. How many apartments does the hospital want? Mr. Hecker, three and a half years ago, you told me to make petitions to get you to do your job. I have collected over one thousand six hundred signatures of citizens asking for maintenance, resources, and commercial code enforcement. While claiming to be inclusive, you create decay and begrudge citizens' resources. This is backwards. You're draining Abington of money while inviting minorities and people of lesser income to live in a degraded area. Where is the new Rochester Playground? The installation had a March start date, and it's not there. Also, my understanding is citizens are supposed to go out into Susquehanna, Edg hill, and other major streets and clear gutters that look like this in front of their homes. Is that the way it's supposed to be? Citizens are supposed to clear the gutters and the, and the grass that is growing in front of their homes. That is not the way it's supposed to be.
Ms. Cubell, your time has expired. Please conclude your comments.
I have many photos of the cement that is in the Raymour &amp; Flanagan lot. Thank you.
First, Ms. Laney Martin, thank you very much for asking. Oh. Okay. Thanks for asking the question. At least we got some information out of that. What I'd like to say for everybody that's a resident, we got our tax bills today. Wouldn't it be great if our Commissioners and Berkhymmer in the township were so sanguine about paying your taxes a late, a day or two, and then you could negotiate a reduced fine with them, and then everybody would be happy about it? And we could even use our solicitor probably to help us out with that. They seem to be pretty hard-nosed when it comes to collecting our money, okay? But they're pretty sanguine about wasting thirty-five thousand bucks, all right? And I'm not, I'm not happy with that personally. Mike Tobin, that was a great question. How do we actually discuss issues in this township right now? I'll just give you an example. If everybody looks, you'll see this is a line of death right here. It was just instituted at the June meeting. If you go over it, then they're going to call police officers to come and address you, okay? If you talk a little loud or whatever, like these guys are just doing right now, and you interrupt something, then you might get a police officer to come over here and tell you to calm down, all right? So for thirty days, I asked, the very first next day, I asked the township manager for a meeting so I could discuss these new issues where all of a sudden we have this increased security issues right here, and we have the police actually being involved in political disagreements. Thirty days I waited. Five days I stood outside at the flagpole for an issue, and I said, hey, just come down and tell me, and I'll come over. Nothing, zero, goose eggs, cricket. So Mike, they don't want to talk about anything at all. That's how average citizens are being treated right now by our administration. That's not right, all right? Now, another thing, going to move on a little bit beyond that. I want to thank our police department, and I would just point out a few things that we should be talking about what happened in the last thirty days. Detective Sergeant Anthony Space was promoted to lieutenant. Congratulations, Detective Sergeant, now lieutenant. Ron Griffith, my friend and neighbor, animal control officer, former NYPD, he retired after years here. Ron, God bless you and good luck in the future. Mary Carmenati was in the Greater Glen Side Parade. She was featured there, retired here. She should be here tonight to get recognized. Detective Phil Gleybert retired on June ninth, and Officer Andre Diaz, a nine-year veteran of New York City Police, he was hired for us. We ought to have him and his wife in here so we could welcome aboard and give them a great thing. Finally, what Mr. Hecker said about the petitions was not true. I was here, it's on video. They refused to accept it. Ms. Gallagher said, we do not accept petitions. What he said was not true, and he knows it. Shame on you. Number twelve in our comment section says, exercise restraint and sound judgment in avoiding the use of profane language and the maligning of others. That also should include telling the truth to the, to the, to the people that are standing here and everything on TV. Mr. Hecker did that in May. He owes the township an apology for what he did in May, and he owes the township an apology tonight for not saying the truth.
Carol Fullforth, I live in, on the fairway in Jenkentown, and I'm new to this whole process, but I know this is going on all across the nation with Commissioners and the citizens sparring off, but I'm just hopeful that we can dialogue and, and get these issues addressed. And I hope we're not boring you because some of you look so bored, like we're wasting your time. And as far as I understand, you're public servants, and I hope that you view your position as such. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to make public comment?
We'll turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman Meadowbrook, and what Joe said about apology being necessary, Mr. Hecker, I'm going to give you a half a second here to make your apology. Not coming. One, one would expect this from you. The number of lies and the number of things, this was so over right in public, and right after she asked you, are you accepting petitions? And you refused to answer. That's just unbelievable. I am going to say that the Google definition or explanation that was read about the massage parlor pales in comparison to some, where clearly the review shows that the massage therapist was completely naked. And once you see that, the police should be in on that right away, and these people should not be getting a permit and a license to operate in this township. The only way to keep our neighborhoods safe is to keep people like that out. Human trafficking is a really serious thing. Some of those women on Monroe Avenue were driven up late at night and thrown out of the car with their luggage. And there were children in the houses nearby watching these women try to get in in the middle of the night. So we, we need to do something more than what's being done, and I believe that the police and the township are both behind schedule in what they need to do here. I want to support a hundred percent what Mr. Tobin said. We need a place where citizens every month can meet with their Commissioners before the main meetings and ask them openly, back and forth, questions about important matters. And on those important matters, the, Mr. Rooney's taking his time to try and congratulate people and bring some positive things forward, but we don't have time because you have concentrated all of our work and all of our meetings into these two pathetic meetings, taking away our committee meetings where the issues could be discussed. And then after that, you used to have a nice section where people were given praise and plaques and applause, and the nice things in the township were explained. We need that, but we can't have that at the expense of telling people to shut up, sit down, we don't want your petitions, we're not going to answer your questions, and oh, by the way, I want to talk, tell you about all these people who cleaned up trash and who, you know, did some other good things and all of that. We can't have the good by erasing the bad. You need to erase the bad by fixing it, and that's what we're trying to get done. And Commissioner Laney Martin, thank you for wanting the positive attitude to be shown, but the way to do it is to clean up the problems that are being brought to you, and then all of us will join in applauding the good things. Thank you.
Mike Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, Tobin Kirkwood Avenue again. To the Commissioners, I, I think what you're hearing, you're hearing a lot of people saying they want to be involved in the community, but they're frustrated. And I think the frustration comes, well, I don't think, I know, the frustration comes from not being able to have a dialogue, not having the citizens be heard, and I'll give an example of the citizens not being heard. I read through a lot of the EDC stuff that dated back to 2020, and in 2020, one of the documents, it was a red-line document, that the original, the original Bowles and Mission Statement all had for five citizen directors. And these are the volunteers that don't, they don't get paid, so there's no financial impact to the township. It was, it was recommended at five. The action groups and the focus groups that were put together recommended seven. In August, it was arbitrarily dropped back to three, when all the citizen groups were recommending seven. And then the township, the Board of Commissioners knocked it down to three. I get it's easier to, to do things when there's less people involved because it's easier to direct three than it is to seven, but for transparency, it doesn't, it makes it look bad. It makes it look like you only wanted the three that you could control and things like that. It just, it looks bad. It looks bad when the citizens want to be involved, they make a recommendation, and then it's, stroke of a pen, it's changed to a lesser number to accommodate what the Board of Directors wants, not what the citizens want. And you are, you are public servants, so as citizens, what we say should be what, what is, what is worked on, not, you know, not your own personal wishes and your own, you know, your own agendas. It should be what's best for the, for the township based on what the citizens, the existing citizens of the township want. And you have a lot of people that want to be involved in this township, and just the way we do these, these meetings and, you know, nobody can speak back and forth and all that, it makes it very difficult. So you're hearing frustration, and these meetings shouldn't be just like a total bitch session. They should be a working session between the citizens and the Board of Directors. Not everybody always getting up complaining that they can't be heard and blah, blah, blah. So, so hopefully, Commissioners, hopefully you're listening, and hopefully you're understanding. It is frustration on citizens that want to be involved, that want a nice township. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. I believe that concludes public comment, and so we will adjourn and reconvene the working session in two minutes.